First, please note this is a public hearing and you are encouraged to speak up to the present line. Please speak up to or present a line of reasoning, support, or position, or to pose or answer a question. Okay. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030, the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. First, do I have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed.
Opposed? Okay. Are there any council members here today? Okay. First, the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
Commissioners, the consent agenda will be read today by Allison Asbrock. Am I pronouncing it right? I never did ask. She's interning for us this summer and has been doing a phenomenal job. We have been very, very fortunate to have her this summer, and she's going to be reading the consent.
Okay. Thanks, Allison.
All right. So this month's consent agenda, we have 10 items. The first being 1303 Edgewood Place for new construction of an addition and outbuilding with a rear setback determination. 1700 Primrose Avenue has actually been moved to new business. So we proceed with 404 Taylor Street for new construction of an addition with a rear setback determination. 415 North 15th Street is also new construction but of a detached accessory dwelling unit, followed by 116 Third Avenue South for signage. 1605 Forest Avenue is a side setback determination. The infill construction for this property was approved in May. 1421 Ordway Place has been removed from the agenda. 917 Petway Avenue is new construction of infill. And then 1906 Fifth Avenue North is new construction of an addition and outbuilding with a side setback determination. 2020th Avenue South is new construction of a detached accessory dwelling unit. 600 Fatherland Street is demolition and new construction of infill with a side setback determination. And 1813 Holly Street is new construction of an addition. Staff finds that these items meet the respective design guidelines and recommend their approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Truman. Is item H1421 Ordway Place, did you say that's been removed from the agenda altogether or been moved to new business?
It has been removed from the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project, I mean, this consent agenda? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda with the one item of the done and put it place in new business.
Okay. All in favor? I mean, second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
None.
All opposed? Okay. Consent agenda is approved. The first one is the one off of the consent agenda, which is 1700 Primrose Avenue.
This work, it proposed at 1700 Primrose Avenue. It is an application to partially demolish an existing rear addition and to construct a new rear addition. The existing rear addition was built after 1957, and it does not contribute to the historic character of the house or of the district. The new addition that's proposed would keep a condition where the existing addition steps out two feet from the left side of the house of the original structure and then would step out an additional three feet to the left. As you know, typically additions are required to step in from the sides of a historic structure to distinguish the new from the old and not to impair or destroy original features. However, in this case, that rear corner has already been compromised by that existing addition. So staff found that keeping that condition and stepping out again was not inappropriate. Staff also found that the visibility along the left side where the addition steps out to the left would be minimal. You can see here the difference in floor heights between this house and the adjacent is pretty significant because the steep, the street is very steep as it slopes up to the west. And in addition to just the floor heights, there's actually a significant retaining wall that goes along the boundary between those two properties. So with that retaining wall and the difference in grade, the addition stepping out a few, three more feet to the left would not be greatly visible. On the right side, the new addition would set in in a more typical way, where it would set in from the right side of the house by 17 feet, which the right side is the bottom of those images before you. So it would keep the condition of the existing addition that also sets in, but it would remove a cover over an existing porch. So in a way, that new addition would have a more defined hyphen than the existing. And staff felt that that was more, that that was appropriate, even though that the Oakland Avenue elevation is more visible. Here's a view of that elevation from the side. Additionally, staff felt that this addition, where it would step in and come back out creating a courtyard where the hyphen is in the low part of that side elevation, staff felt that this additional width of the addition was appropriate because the lot is irregularly shaped, as you can see there on those two versions of the site plan, existing and proposed. The lot is 56 feet wide at the front and then widens out to 86 feet wide at the back. So it's wider, even at the front, it's wider than the average lot of the vicinity, but then certainly gets much wider, 30 feet wider as it goes back. The height of the addition, as you see, will match that of the historic house with the primary roof, a clipped gable, and also with clipped gable dormer, clipped gable side projections. Those roof forms match the roof form of the historic house. The primary wall material of the addition would be cement fiber clapboard siding, which is an appropriate addition, appropriate material for an addition to a brick house. Other exterior materials will also be compatible, a split face block foundation, cement fiber and wood trim, Miratec trim, asphalt shingle roof. And as you see, the right side elevation there, it would be composed largely of windows, which will have, staff found, would have the effect of lightening the mass, reducing the perceived mass of the addition. I should say that this addition, the house is currently a two-family structure, and the existing addition was, which is the right side of the top image there, is essentially a second unit. And the new addition will continue to be a secondary unit, a second dwelling on the structure, which is permitted by zoning. And as such, it has an entrance that faces Oakland Avenue, but the entrance is more of a stoop than a porch, and staff felt that that allowed the addition to address the street in a way that didn't compete with the front elevation for prominence, which in a sense allowed the orientation of the house to remain intact facing Primrose Avenue. For all these reasons, staff found that the location and configuration of this proposed addition was distinguishable from the new construction. As an addition, it would not impact or impair any historic features, and that the scale was appropriate largely because of the grade of the lot and the irregular proportions of the lot. Staff recommends approval of the proposed addition with conditions that the selection of windows and doors and brick color, which would be for the foundation, would be approved by staff, and that the exterior utilities, HVAC units, be located on the rear or side facade beyond the midpoint of the house, typical conditions. In meeting these conditions, staff finds that the partial demolition and new construction meets the applicable design guidelines for Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Any questions? Sean? Okay. Thank you.
The applicant is here if you have questions for them as well.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Gentlemen, ladies, I'm Van Pond, 1200 Division Street, Nashville, 3723. I'm the architect.
Any questions for Van or, okay. Well, we'll, thank you very much. Okay. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Please come forward. Okay. Seeing none, closed public hearing. Robin, was this taken off consent?
The commissioner requested it be taken off.
Okay. Okay. Discussion.
Well, I think I was that commissioner. I didn't know that. I hadn't decided whether I thought it needed to be. I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to say a couple of things, because as I was looking through, it all made sense, reading the narrative, but I did pause on the conceptual east elevation, which is the lower of the two here. And because we're on a corner lot, and this has been a hot topic in the past of how do duplexes sit on corner lots and whether it's supposed to be one whole building or presented as two separate houses, it started to look to me a little bit like an umbilical duplex that we've clearly disapproved a few different times. I think, however, this one is different in a few ways, and I think all I really want to do is get in the record why I think this one is different, see if anybody else has other ideas, but this is a much bigger lot. It's 75 feet wide in the front, 86 feet in the back, so you don't have this very wide second house trying to fit into a not-deep lot. And that what might kind of look like an umbilical from the connection between the two units is a pre-existing condition. It's part of what the addition already was there, even if it's not historic. Maybe if they were starting from scratch, we might want something different. I'm not entirely sure, but I think that also makes this quite a bit different. That's all I have.
Motion?
I'd like to thank Aaron for bringing that up. When I looked at this, that was kind of my first response or thought as well, so I, those are very good thoughts. I appreciate that.
I'll go ahead and add to that, that, you know, to me, in a way, this is an example of why the umbilical, you know, part of our zoning ordinance can't, or how it can work. Because, you know, like other cases in the past, you know, being on a corner, I think it's appropriate that this addition, as a two-family dwelling, appears to be two dwellings, appears to be two homes, and as opposed to one much, much larger home, which might be out of character with the neighborhood. So while the umbilical, because of some of the bad examples that have, you know, occurred, has really had sort of a negative reaction from the community and from both Planning Commission and Historic Zoning Commission, in a way, you know, this, I feel, is a great example of how probably the umbilical was intended to work, to make it feel like single-family homes, you know, in these one- and two-family zoned neighborhoods. But, so, I concur with your comments and supportive of the design.
Motion?
I just have one observation. I'm sorry. I should have asked Sean this before, but one of the conditions for approval by the staff is that the selections of windows and doors and brick color, texture, and dimensions be approved by the staff. It sounded like from reading over when I was preparing for this today that you really have already done that, or is that not correct? You just want this done before the installation of these items?
That's correct. We often add that as a fairly standard condition. An architect could have something in mind, but then, once it actually gets sent, you know, once it's approved, it's essentially out of their hands and then onto a builder's hands. So we want to have it added in there again for the permit for whoever ultimately builds this, that those things need to come back through us.
And I do, I know that we do typically have this in there, but it just looked, from reading over it, that they'd already kind of done that, so I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right. I'm sorry to take up your time.
Very good. Move approval? A second? Okay. I have a motion and second. All in favor?
Based on staff recommendation.
Yeah.
So amended?
Yeah. Yeah. That got a little confusing. Do you mind just doing it again?
Sure. Yeah. I move approval with staff recommendation.
Sure. Okay. All in favor?
All opposed?
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Okay. The first order of new business is 2308 White Avenue.
2308 White Avenue is an application to construct new infill with an attached garage on a vacant lot. The proposed infill will be one and a half stories with an eve height of approximately 13 feet above grade and a ridge height of approximately 29 feet above grade. Staff finds that the proposed height meets the immediate historic context. The primary cladding materials include five-inch lap siding and board and battens. The roof will be metal or asphalt shingle, both of which meet the design guidelines. Staff asks to approve all final material selections. Staff also asks that the front porch columns have a cap and a base, and that the porch rack continue onto the side facade of the front porch. Here is the site plan and the rear facade. The infill meets all base zoning setbacks. The front wall of the infill will be situated approximately 34 feet 3 inches from the front property line, which is the approximate average of the two structures on its either side. However, because the house to the south is not contributing, staff recommends that the building, the new infill, be located back about another 18 inches so that it matches the front setback of the house, the historic house to the north. The infill includes an attached garage facing the rear of the property and accessed via the rear alley. In the past, the commission has required that garages be detached from the primary structure and located in the rear of the property where outbuildings were historically located. The commission has permitted garages to be attached when they are located at the rear of the structure and when they are situated at the basement level. Although the proposed attached garage is located at the rear of the infill and is accessed via the alley, it is not at the basement level. There is a four-to-five-foot drop in grade from the front of the house to the rear of the house, which is not sufficient to locate the garage at the basement level. The proposed attached garage is located only partially below the finished floor line, finished first floor line. Because of this, staff finds that the proposed attached garage does not meet Section 3B2H of the design guidelines, and staff recommends that a condition of approval be that the attached garage be eliminated from the primary structure. Here are the two side elevations. And here's a diagram at the top showing the proposed infill in relation to the other houses on the street. Along this block of White Avenue, the houses are predominantly one and one and a half stories, and they range in height from 22 feet to 25 feet above grade, a few feet shorter than the 29 feet that is proposed for 2308 White Avenue. However, on the northwest corner of White Avenue and Bradford Avenue, about a half a block away, there is a tall two-story structure that is more than 35 feet tall in height, and there are other two tall two-story structures within blocks of the site. So therefore, staff found that the proposed height and scale of the infill met the design guidelines and met the historic context. Here are some of the houses. The first two houses are the houses on either side of the site. The house on the bottom is the house located at the corner of Cathy Street, or Cathy Avenue and White. And here are more houses along White Avenue. And then at the top is the tall two-story structure at the corner of White Avenue and Bradford. And the bottom is a view of kind of what's directly across the street from the site, which is not in the historic overlay. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions. One, that staff verify the construction height of the foundation and floor system in the field to ensure the finished floor line of the infill is compatible with the finished floor line of the historic house to the north. Two, the house be pushed back approximately 18 inches so that its front wall lines up exactly with the historic house to the north. Three, staff approve the metal roof color or asphalt shingle color, brook or stone sample, door specifications, and porch floor material prior to purchase and installation. Four, the front porch columns have caps and bases. Five, the front porch rack continue to the side of the front porch. Six, the attached garage be eliminated from the primary structure. And the applicant submit a new application for an outbuilding if an outbuilding is desired. And finally, that staff approve the location of the HVAC units. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines for Woodland and Waverly. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is here to address the commission as well.
Okay.
Melissa, when you, if you, if the garage becomes detached, would you guys want approval rights of what that elevation then becomes on the back of the building?
Yeah, we would re-review, you know, whether or not what's the garage now becomes some sort of bonus space, or if it's, you know, if there's any redesign, we would want to, the staff would certainly want to take a look at it. If we thought that it was something that had significantly altered the proportions or design of the house, we would bring it back to the commission. But, I mean, I think it could be eliminated in a way that does not significantly change the design that you see before you. And then, of course, we would want, if they did want to detach the garage, we would review that. Certain garages we can approve at staff level. Some of them have to come to the commission, so, you know, we would treat it as we would any other detached garage.
Okay. Thanks, Melissa. Does the applicant like to come forward and give us your name and address?
Thank you. My name is Josh Spence. I'm with Ken &amp; Calhoun Workshop. We're the designer and applicant for this project. We're representing Mr. Schneider. I live at 5725 Cloverwood Drive. We met with the staff on several occasions just to try to clarify and kind of get the right path with this design. We're dealing with a site here that slopes from White Avenue to the alley around nine or 10 feet, so we had a little bit of a challenge ahead of us. What we knew early on is that we desired a garage on the alley side, and so it, with the slope in the site, reading through the guidelines, we felt like this was appropriate opportunity to provide a garage at the basement level as suggested by the guidelines. And so, early on in the process, we sought kind of a clarification on what a basement was, and the response that we received was that it had to be below finished floor. And so we proceeded with a design that put the finished floor elevation of the garage five feet below the first floor level, which is the kind of interior of White Avenue approach side. And in doing this, we felt like we were meeting that, and we proceeded with design and based our design around that. So I guess our response to this, the other items that are conditions on this request, we have no problem with. Those are all things that we think we can incorporate in the design. We're happy to let staff review our material choices. We feel like we're trying to do something that's appropriate for this area. The one thing that we do kind of have issue with and feel like would be somewhat of a hardship for the homeowner would be this detached garage situation. The site actually would allow for as much of an eight- or nine-foot grade floor elevation change for this garage. So I guess our request would be, what would be appropriate? What would be considered a basement, a garage for this? We are locating it on the rear side of the property facing the alley. We don't feel like that the garage or the garage doors themselves will be visible from either White Avenue or the side street, nearby side street. So that would be our request today, that we could move forward with the garage as designed, even if we had to tweak the finished floor elevation.
One more time for the record. How low did you say? Just so we'll know.
The design currently, finished floor elevation of the garage is five feet below the first floor.
And I'm sorry. And you said you could go eight to nine feet?
The site falls approximately nine feet.
Okay.
So we could take it as far as nine feet down.
Quick question for you. What to, on the plan, there's four risers, so you're looking at, what, 20, not quite 32 inches, 28-ish inches to the porch, and then you get on up to the house from there. So if you establish 542 at the entry, plus, that's 544, your entrance at the garage is at 538, which seems to me to be six feet delta? If you, if the garage were sunk, you'd end up adding, you'd have a really tall, really tall garage, some extra storage up there for sure.
Yeah. And that was the, that was the intent, to incorporate kind of a bonus space above that garage.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that the math was working out.
Oh, you're saying, you're saying the clear height in the garage. Yes, it would be a tall garage.
Yeah. But I think the grades appear to be potentially more than five feet without getting that garage up a little bit higher.
That's true.
I don't, maybe, there's some discussion that needs to happen here as to what exactly constitutes a basement, so we'll see if we can't figure that out.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Please come forward and state your name and address. Okay. Seeing none, closed public hearing. Discussion?
Robin, is it fair to say that we've, to the extent a garage has been attached, in the past, when we've required in the basement, we meant that the entire garage, or like the eight to nine feet, is entirely below this finished floor? Has that been the?
That's right. When the grade has dropped enough that you gain an entire, another level, that's the only time you've allowed for attached garages.
You're really not setting, I think what's different here is that you have a garage, you're trying to sort of sink versus having a house that's got a, you know, parking underneath it, so to, so to speak.
So I guess I've got a couple of issues. One, the way our guidelines are written, there is not a section called garages. There's a section called outbuildings. There is no outbuilding here. Now, it does go on in the Thaleses, which I guess is our policy or generally how we have operated, to state that historic garages, where are we here? Historic garages are usually located as near to a rear corner of a parcel as possible. So that, you know, I'm not sure our guidelines really tell us where garages have to be, you know. There's how we facted previously. And then I guess the second question I have, maybe for the other commissioners or for the staff, is what was our rationale behind, with our objective of being to protect historic neighborhoods? What was our rationale behind allowing basement garages not on an alley versus, you know, not allowing garages close to the house where they're not a basement like this, I guess?
Historically, the only time you saw vehicles stored inside the house, if you will, is when it was at a basement level. So that has been, and this was before my time, but that has been what the commission has looked at, that garages are only appropriate when they're at a basement level.
So historically, there are examples of?
Basement-level garages.
Basement-level garages in this neighborhood that were?
A lot of them aren't used that way anymore because they were so small, you can't get a modern car in them. But yes, there are many examples of basement-level garages.
Okay. What, so be it, I'm not sure there's, I'm not sure you can tell the difference here. You know, you look at these drawings, you look at the elevations, and you look at the rear, you look from the alley, which is the only place where this garage is going to be visible, and it appears to be a basement garage. So from an appearance perspective, which is really, I think, anyone is generally concerned about here, I don't know how this is much different. It seems like a technicality to, or, you know, per- It seems like a technicality to, or, or, you know, perhaps there's concern about setting a precedent, but I think in this case, due to the, the grade change, I don't see this any different than a, than a basement garage. I don't, I don't see any rationale why this wouldn't be appropriate under our guidelines where a basement garage would be appropriate, despite what we've done in the past.
Well, when you use the same word precedent, I think we can, we can define it in this case, and it'd be five or six feet below the floor level. But I do think that sort of opens us up to a lot of discussion in design moving forward that, that might present us some problems. Now, Robin, if they were to excavate and lower it down to, I mean?
A story.
A, a story. I mean, could do, they do that excavation and make that, make it so that it meets more of what we have approved in the past.
We wouldn't necessarily recommend that because it's creating a ramp. You know, the grade is what it is, so if they're excavating down, they're creating this ramp to get down to the entrance. And so, that's why, again, in the, and for the past few years, only when the grade itself has dropped enough to create a whole nother level.
Okay, so it is based on existing ground line?
It was right, it's when you've allowed for that.
Okay.
I have a, maybe this, I'll hope to provide a little clarity with this. Staff, can you clarify condition number one? I look at the photograph, and it appears that the house most adjacent where foundation height not contrasting greatly would be evaluated, that, that one, if I'm reading the picture right, looks to be about a step, about, it's a relatively, is that, does that yard slope in the same way that this one does?
I'm not sure if I can, really where the, this first condition comes from is recent experience with inspections and finding that we typically do a foundation inspection to make sure the foundation height is reasonable compared to other heights. But we found recently is that the finished floor heights have grown as well, so even the foundation height is compatible with neighboring foundation heights, the finished floor height grows by an extra foot or so, making the house taller than what was originally?
Trusts or?
Yeah, like a trust system, right. So, so this is kind of, this is a condition that we spoke about as a staff, not necessarily because of, it's not, it's not necessarily specific to this infill, but to pretty much all infills going forward, that we would want to do an additional, additional inspection just to win the project's under construction, to make sure that the finished floor height is compatible.
So, in looking, I guess to the point, in looking at the rendering of this, that the applicant has provided, there's four steps, let's assume that's twenty-four inches to the finished floor of the porch, which I think they're also assume is the finished floor of the house.
Right.
If we establish that at five forty-five, the reality of, I think the reality of construction i- is that the garage could, without manipulating the site, could very easily be at five thirty-eight. That's seven feet in residential construction, you know, eight feet's a story. I, I don't, I don't know that we're necessarily veering too far, getting the bulldozer out there and drastically adjusting the site to, to meet the intent of the guidelines, and I think the reality to the site may, in fact, be greater than five feet. But I could be wrong, once the applicant gets out and, or the applicant's contractor gets out and starts to do grading on the site, I, I think it could very well be right at, right at a full story. They'll have a tall garage, but that's, that's their choice.
Just comment, I think if we did go there, we, if we go there with, during this precedent, so to speak, I think we really do, we would really have to make sure it really does come across, I mean, that it really is a basement, that, that, you know, there's, maybe, maybe there's even a house on top of it, but, which would, would go right in with what their design is anyway. I just think, we just need to be careful with having to change the site too much to make a basement, but I do feel, I, I'm not as convinced right now it reads as a outbuilding, as Commissioner G. said, I, I still feel like it is as a attached feel to it, even, and I know the rendering is flat, it's not showing the slope as much, but I think if we go down this route, we need to make sure that we, we really make it where, we really recommend that it would be a real basement so that we're not veering away from what we've already established.
Melissa, could you take us back to the slide that shows the floor plan with the grades on it, please? I'm not very convinced that a historically accurate detached garage is that much of a hardship. From the, well, we have, from the existing garage, we have a three-foot grade change?
Say that again now, what are you saying?
From the, from the way they, we have the garage drawn on this plan right here, there's three feet down the alley.
Down the alley.
Yeah. I don't, I don't see a hardship here with a, with a traditional detached garage.
And you're saying that because of the, the finished floor being five thirty-six and the other five thirty-nine, is that what you're saying? The three feet, is that the three feet you're?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at the grade of the land. We have plus or minus three or four feet from the back of this garage to the alley. So, I, I don't see the hardship. I, I think a detached garage is totally doable. Well, hang on, I've got something else. This is a question for staff, Melissa or Robin. This list of recommendations seems to be oddly long, and as I read through them and looked at the plans, I didn't see any of these on the plans. I mean, has this been a very recent conversation, or there's some reason why we're not seeing this on these plans already?
Um, hopefully I'm answering your question. You know, even though, I think the way I broke them out is I kind of listed everyone very sep, all of the conditions separately where they maybe could have been grouped together more, so it seems maybe longer than it is. I think most of them, besides the garage, I think most of them are pretty easy fixes, adding a cap and a base to the columns. Approval of materials is something we always pretty much include. Approval of the HVAC is something we always include. Adding a front porch rack to the side, you know, that's drawing two lines.
If you're comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, I think the garage was really kind of the only sticking point. I think everything else that they've agreed to with one more round of revisions, you know, another set of drawings, we could easily issue the permit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion or a motion or?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion, but before I do that, I'm just going to repeat what another commissioner pointed out at the la, at our last meeting, that what we've done in the past is not always, you know, we don't always find is necessarily the right answer. And I, and I really don't see any difference. I mean, really, when it comes down to protecting this neighborhood, there's not a historic home on this property. And may, maybe it does make us, make our job harder on the next one, but that's, you know, what we're here to do, is to interpret the guidelines and determine how, how can we protect these neighborhoods. And I don't see the difference between this and if, if it were three feet lower and a basement. Visually, it wouldn't be significantly difference, different certainly from the street and even from the alley. I can't imagine why it would be. So, we're really talking about sort of functional issues that historically there was a precedent for outbuildings either being on an alley, or garages being on an alley, or being under the main level of the house, which is just simply a functional thing, not a, not, I think this case proves that it's not necessarily an architectural thing. So, I'll make the, the motion to approve staff recommendation with all of the conditions except condition number six.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay.
And can we do a little discussion to?
Yep, sure can. Discussion?
Is there a second?
Yeah, yeah. Rose's second. I, I tend to agree with, with Hunter on this. I think the, I get the historic argument that they were located there, and for me, as long as they stay in the rear, and we're clear we're not setting precedent for these to slip around to the side, because we have allowed basement level on the side before when there's been significant grade change, and it was sort of the only way to, to do it. If it's all the way in the rear, I, I guess I, I'm kind of thinking like Hunter does on this, that I'm not sure why we care what it looks like. We don't spend much time at all commenting on any, the rear of anyone's house. I mean, if there was a twenty-by-twenty picture window on the back of the house, I don't know if we'd care. So, it's just, like you said, kind of a function issue to me.
If I could add to that, too, if this were a historic home, I think the conversation would, would be different, and they were adding on to the back, perhaps it would be different. If they didn't have space above the garage, if it was just a one-story garage, you know, it, it might be a different conversation we would be having. But, but to me, this looks like, acts like, feels like a basement garage.
I might also, my only concern with it really is that if we're, if we're going to allow increased integration of garages into homes, we may be setting ourselves up for some massing issues, because now you've got an extra five to seven hundred square feet that is now under the roof. So, that's, I think if, if somebody wants this, there, there's probably going to be trade-offs for them in terms of how big the rest of the house can be to still meet the massing and the scale guidelines we have. So, that may be the rub for future applicants. I think in this case, to your point, the applicant has done, from a scale standpoint, it, it meets the guidelines with an attached garage that I think is at, at a, close enough to a basement level, and I, I do feel that by the time they grade this thing out, that there may be more than five feet of, of delta across it, but as design, I, I think it works.
Any consideration of going as low as works with the, with the grade, I mean, making it closer to the seven or eight feet as the applicant said? Note it.
I like that idea, if you were so willing.
Lowering?
Just within their, just within their, what they said they could. That would kind of, you know, keep, you know, just as a, I won't say compromise, but just in, in light of the, the spirit of where you're going, but still keeping with the spirit of a basement, and, and making it not too disruptive to what they've already planned.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to them going lower if they can. Another question perhaps for staff, I mean, if they were to raise the, the finished floor a foot or so and lower the garage a foot or so, I mean, we're real close to it being a, you know, a full flight below. Would another foot on the overall height of the building, you know, change staff's recommendation? I know this is, you're, you probably have to see drawings.
Yeah, probably have to see drawings.
Already maxing out the height.
From how we were looking at it before, I think another foot maybe wouldn't make enough of a difference from what our recommendation was.
I don't know why, you know, we're up here making this basement work. I mean, I'm kind of following where Sam is. I mean, we're doing this whole exercise to make it be a basement when really it's a very marginal basement at most, and it's just a garage that happens to be five feet below the rest of the house. It's not, there's no other basement in the house. It's not a basement under a house. It's a structure that's a little bit lower that happens to be a garage, and it's just a lot of gymnastics to kind of make it feel like a basement.
I'm kind of with.
Okay, well, if there's no more discussion, we do have a motion, a second, I guess, no changes to that? Okay? All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Okay. Did you get that recorded? Okay.
I did. I would like to ask some questions if I could, because we want to make sure we give people really good direction, and this is the direction we've been giving for years. Is this motion based on the fact that you feel this truly is a basement garage? And then, how would we define that for applicants in the future? Is this only for new, whole new construction, not for additions? Or is this, are you saying basement-level, or rear attached garages are always appropriate if they're at the rear? We just want to make sure we give people the correct direction. We'll, we'll be back here talking about it again if we don't know what to tell people.
I can only speak to my rationale, and there's different people voting, perhaps for different reasons, but for me, it, it was the fact that it is in the rear, that it is lower than the finished floor to a large degree, and I'm not saying that that's dispositive, but if the only rationale for the garage to be located in the basement is because historically that's where it was, and no one could see it, that isn't terribly persuasive to me, because I think a lot of what our guidelines do is, it's about the facade and how it appears from the street and front facade. So, it doesn't offend any of those principles, and as long as the applicant is able to control the massing, in spite of putting substantial, you know, five to seven hundred more square feet under the roof, if they can control the massing and scale, I think I'm generally fine with it, but it's going to be, I think, difficult for a lot of people to do that. The grade change certainly helped them here. That's about all I can tell you about my rationale. I, the other situations, I think you kind of have to see them. They're sort of hypothetical.
I would, I would think that we chalk this up as a unique case and not make a blanket decision right here, right now, today.
I think there's many, many factors, as Aaron has touched on a number of them, and for me personally, if it was a historic home, I'd be looking at this very differently.
Robin, I know you've also asked all those questions. Have we, have they, they given, given enough in the, in the motion to give direction?
We, we, the motion is clear. Honestly, I'm not clear how to advise applicants, but the motion is clear. Yes, thank you.
Safe to say, unless someone disagrees, that this, whatever precedent we may or may not be setting is, at least for the time being, confined to infill and not, would not be applicable to additions to historic homes. So, it's fairly narrow, that being just one of several factors that we've already discussed.
I think it's okay to tell applicants that each case is different, and the commission, you know?
Easier said than done for her.
And I also think it's really, really critical, I think everyone on this commission would probably agree, that the staff is giving your objective interpretation of the guidelines to us, whether you agree with our past actions or not.
I don't think there's anything different that you need to say to potential applicants than you already are based on this decision today. And I seconded the motion based on everything that Hunter articulated. I was quite persuaded by it. And so, I don't think you really have anything different to say than you already are saying.
Well, if you're okay, then I think we're going to move on to the next one. We probably may have to talk about this another time. Next one is 116 Opry Place.
This project is for a partial demolition of the existing addition at the Ryman Auditorium that was constructed in 1994, and the construction of a new addition that will pull the building closer to Fourth Avenue. The addition meets the design guidelines in terms of scale, materials, location, and its impact on the historic building, which is really pretty minimal, because it isn't actually attached to the building. which is really pretty minimal because it isn't actually attached to the building. It will, it's attached to the addition but not the historic portion of the building. It will require minor reconfiguration to the parking and plaza area. And this is actually before and what it would look like after shot below. Also included in the project is signage, and your report states that there are two signs because staff believe that the sign above the entrance was actually inside, beyond that glass wall. So some of these calculations that I'm going to give you now are going to be different than what you see in your staff recommendation. To summarize, there will be one sign which will face Fourth Avenue, the Fourth Avenue sign beyond the wall near the steps. A second sign will be above the new entrance. The third sign will face the alley and it's integral to the fascia of the one-story portion of the addition. The locations, illumination, and materials of all three signs meet the design guidelines. The electronic changeable copy sign, which is that one on the fascia, meets the design guidelines in terms of duration of the image, frequency, type of transitions, and brightness. On the Fourth Avenue side, the sign allotment is 180 square feet. And the two wall signs, the one above the entrance and the front wall sign, are totaled 64, so that meets the design guidelines. The alley side is also allocated 180 square feet, but 259 square feet is proposed. In addition, changeable copy sign should not cover more than 50% of the built sign area, and this one proposes to cover 100%. So in terms of size alone, there are two design guidelines that the signage doesn't meet. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the project with the condition that the electronic signage should be reduced to be no more than 180 square feet, which again is different than what's in your staff recommendation. With this condition, staff finds that the proposed sign meets Section 4 of the Broadway Historic Preservation Overlay. And the applicants are here if you have any questions for them.
Do we have a visual of what the proposed sign looked like or were there? That's not the one that's too large, is it?
That's the one that's too large. The other two that you see above the entrance and the one at the steps, they meet the design guidelines in all ways. Materials, signage, lighting, everything. The only one we were concerned about in terms of size is the electronic changeable copy sign.
And this is, if I'm looking at this right, this is the one facing the alley?
Facing, it's facing the alley, but it'll be visible and, you know, that's the point. So the tourists can see it down a Broadway and know where the Ryman is.
Right, but so the alley's this way and is this fourth?
Yes, fourth is perpendicular to that.
Okay.
Or at a right angle.
And it's calculated by just the entire square footage of the fascia?
Actually, it's the square footage of the side and then, which obviously is much longer than the front of the building. And then it also says that it should be capped at what the front calculation is, which is 180 square feet.
Okay, just to clarify, the max is 180 square feet and we're looking at 259 square feet. And we're treating this entire thin facade as the entire sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that whole fascia is the sign.
Okay.
So everywhere you see blue, blue and white.
Sorry, and Robin, the, I heard you say is different than our staff report. Are you saying that staff's now saying 180 square feet?
Square feet is the maximum.
Is the maximum versus the 154 that was in our.
Correct.
And then can you again tell us how the 180 is established?
The way the guidelines read is that you take the width of the building and you times it, times one and a half. And that's where we came up with 180 square feet. And this is a side elevation, so you can also take the side elevation. But then it says it should also be maxed at what you have in the front. So since the side is much longer, they don't actually get all of that allotment for that side because the maximum is for the front.
And the intent of the guideline is such that the side of the building doesn't have more signage than the front of the building? It suggests that the front should have prominent signage?
That, and electronic changeable copy sign is obviously not a historic element. And so something that when, and Commissioner Mosley was a part of these discussions in creating the sign guidelines, I think the intent was really to keep electronic signage at a minimum in the historic district.
The front, the front, how's that calculated? Just that fascia in the front?
No, we looked at the front of the Ryman, so not just the addition. Right. Well, actually on third, again, because if we look at it on fourth, we're really just looking at the existing addition. Wanted to look at the true entire width of the historic building.
Okay, any more questions to Robin? Yep, go ahead.
I assume all this is brand-new signage or no signage, no part, any demolition?
Yes, there was some signage above the entrance.
There was some?
Not electronic. Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Robin. Would the applicant like to come forward and name and address?
Good afternoon. My name is David Powell. I'm an architect with Hastings Architecture Associates, 127 Third Avenue South here in Nashville, 37201, about a block away from this project. So we have a unique perspective. We are handing out some additional exhibits that I'll be talking from in addition to what is on the screen. So thank you for your time today and I'm assuming that it goes without saying that we feel like we are in a very honored position to be asked to be a part of this team to help with the addition and expansion of the historic Ryman Auditorium. Robin did a great job of summarizing what we're doing, but I'd like to very quickly go into greater detail just so you have a bigger picture of what we're talking about here. So what we passed out, the first page of what we just passed out is a, an image of the existing condition. So you can see the historic structure and the addition that was done in 1994. So point number one, and maybe the most important point you hear today, we are not touching the original building, okay? We are not touching the historic building at all, okay? So the addition that you see on this first sheet that was done in 1994 remains intact except that the front facade comes off and this portion is extended, expanded another 30, 32 feet towards Fourth Avenue. It has essentially the same aesthetic with a slightly modified front entry facade as you will see on page two. In front of that expansion is an additional structure that houses a new cafe. And this is a glass box with a thin, flat roof on top of the glass box that reaches all the way out to Fourth Avenue, the back of the sidewalk on Fourth Avenue. And as you can see from the third page, this also includes an outdoor terrace at the Fourth Avenue side or end of this building. When we first started working on this project and established goals and needs of the client and of this facility, among other things, probably at the top of the list architecturally was making sure that we reached all the way out to Fourth to overcome what I think all of you probably recognize having been to the Ryman, that there's no visibility from Broadway, from Fourth and Broad, the heart of our tourist district. You actually can't see where the Ryman is from this intersection. So establishing an architectural solution that reached all the way out to Fourth Avenue was a priority for this group. So once we did that, as you can see in this third slide, we then started talking about the signage, which is the point that I think we'll be talking about the most today. So we've created this architecture. We could put a static sign that simply says the Ryman or the Ryman Auditorium somewhere on this facade to be viewed from the intersection. But remembering what this facility is and that it is a 2,400-seat entertainment venue that has non-stop tours during the day and events at night, well beyond concerts, but fundraising events. And, you know, there's events almost every night in this facility. This sign needed to be more dynamic. It needed to be essentially a marquee, much like the arena, the Bridgestone Arena sign that shows upcoming events. The calendar is always being updated and advertising what's coming up is, was a priority and critical to what the signage was to accomplish. So the visibility was important. It being a dynamic sign that could be changeable and more than just saying the Ryman was important, the initial design solution was actually an animated sign, a constantly animated sign. We felt like we had a pretty good argument because it's on the downhill side of the one-way street. So it would not be a distraction to the drivers and the cars. And working with Robin on this and understanding more of the eight-second rule, if you will, that the copy doesn't change any more frequently than eight seconds, and working with the operators and owners of the facility, it was determined that we could, we could, we could work with the eight-second. But that brings us to, I think, the point we want to talk about the most, which is the size of the sign. We needed the sign of the size, size of the sign to be as large as possible with respect to the architecture. So it did not feel additive or something put on top of the roof or an afterthought, but was integral to the architecture, but as large as possible to make it as legible as possible from a greater distance. Because we're overcoming the fact that we are, you know, a ways away from the intersection. We're not right on the strip. We're, this facility is about 175 feet from the north side of Fourth and Broad and about 250 feet away from the south side of Broad. So we're trying to overcome this distance. I want to pass out something else if you don't mind, Joni. I'd like to pass out a diagram that helps explain something that might be a question that comes up. And that is how visible is this sign from the intersection? So in all honesty, this perspective that you're seeing on your screens or on page three of the handout is taken from just next door to Margaritaville. So you have just started up the hill on Fourth, next to Margaritaville, looking at this entire new addition that shows the entire sign band. But in, now that you all have this diagram, so the yellow square indicates the roof of this cafe, which is also the length of this sign as shown in the rendering that's on your screen. And this is the proposed rendering, or proposed length of the sign. The blue bar that reaches all the way down and crosses over Broadway is what staff recommendation is, which is only the right or east half of this sign band being allowed. The green line is the line from the left corner, if we were to have the full length approved, and cutting the corners of the backside of the former Groon Guitar Building and the front corner of Margaritaville, thus establishing the additional viewable area where you can see the left half of the sign. Does that make sense? So this is about 120% increase of visibility from Broadway on the south side of Broadway and a portion even on the north side of Broadway where you're seeing more than just half of the sign. This is again, critical to us because of the legibility and being able to convey this message from a greater distance. So in summary, we're essentially asking for approval of a digital marquee that is changing copy every eight seconds, which is within compliance, but at full length. So it looks aesthetically more integrated into the architecture. This is being designed into the fascia of the roof and not applied after the fact. So a sign that is only half this length would break from that aesthetic and call attention to the fact that it's not the full length and essentially acting as the fascia, right? So we're asking for approval of this proposed length to provide the appropriate legibility and exposure relative to the distance off of Broadway. This is a tourist-oriented business, arguably the most symbolically important tourist-oriented business. And while within the overlay, is not actually located directly in the heart of the tourist area. Therefore, being off of Broadway, we feel this is appropriate solution to overcome this distance. Last comment before I want to hand it over to Joni for a brief comment. I know that precedent is always a concern here. So two points that I think are very important is there are no large venues on Broadway except for the arena, which is not in the overlay. So this is the only large venue that is trying to advertise what the upcoming events are at this scale. And it's not on Broadway. So the precedent issue is overcome by the fact that this is a unique function, this facility, unique to Lower Broad in its scale and its unique location. It's not on Broadway. It's off of Broadway and we're trying to overcome that. And one last set of talking points that I want to quickly run through. I want you to hear Joni Priest from our office going to talk about the calculations, which is the last page in the handout.
Thank you. I'm Joni Priest with Hastings Architecture Associates, 127 Third Avenue South. You'll see there on the last page what Robin was describing a few minutes ago. And there's text on the upper left-hand corner that's taken from the guidelines and our understanding of the calculations and how they're made. When calculating building signs, that is the Fourth Avenue or the East facade and the Fifth Avenue or West facade, the calculation is 1.5 square feet of sign area per one linear foot of building facade. So both of those, the East and the West facades are entitled to 180 square feet of signage. And as Robin was describing, the non-street-facing facades, that is, the north facade and the south facade, are entitled to one square foot of signage per linear foot, except that they're capped at whatever the street-facing facades are capped at. So they are also capped at 180. So we're looking at the four sides of the building being entitled to 180 square feet for a total of 720 square feet. That's our understanding of the guidelines. And I think as Robin was describing, that's her understanding of them also. So our request today is, shown here graphically, the first three images showing you the East, the South, and the North elevations in terms of what would be allowed up to 180 square feet on each one of those facades. Kind of shown in orange on those elevations. And then below those, you will see what we're proposing. The East elevation, as described by Robin, is 65 square feet in two signs, so significantly less than 180. The South elevation, for your consideration, is 259 square feet of electronic sign. And then the North elevation having no signage at all. And then we don't have a drawing for you because it's not changing. The West facade or the historic facade on Fifth Avenue currently has two signs that are 40 square feet and we would not be proposing any change to that. So the West facade has 80 square feet being used of its 180-square-foot entitlement. So you can see there in the chart at the top of the page, the, our understanding is that the building is entitled to 720 square feet across its four facades and that we're requesting that number be 404 with this proposal. But with that extra kind of being taken from other facades and applied to the South facade for the electronic sign at 259 square feet. Are there any questions about all of that math? I'm happy to answer them if you have any.
Can you swap sides? Can you, can you take, can you rob from one facade or the other?
That would not be our recommendation.
Can you, as of right?
It's your interpretation of the design guidelines. That was not the intent. That's why different sides have different calculations.
That's not my recollection of the discussions and the intent of the guidelines.
Real quick, Joni, just to hopefully make this simple and not more complicated. In lay terms, what I'm reading from your, from your diagram here is that since you're not putting any signage on the West facade, that you would like, you'd like to rob from the West and put on the South, correct?
Yes, I think the visibility that Dave has described to you of the South facade is not necessary on the North facade. There's no signage at all proposed on the North side at this point. And that the calculations of the total still is significantly less than the allotment for the total.
Understood.
Joni, does the, does the owner, tell me about the parcel that is just opposite the alley. I guess it'd be behind Groon and I don't know that series of buildings that are there. Do you all know, is that part of the ownership of this parcel as well?
It is not.
It is not?
It's separate ownership.
It's separate ownership.
Yeah, I guess that would be the back of all those honky-tonks, right?
That's right. But as you can see from the diagram that had the view shed that was just passed out as the last piece, you can see that the alley is pretty significant. It's very wide at that point, and as it gets to the original, oh, it's right here, as it gets to the original building, the historic building, that throats back down to a typical-sized alley. So it's, I believe, a 24-foot-wide alley, the entire length of all of the additions put together before it becomes more narrow.
For the staff's sake, your blue bar will be bigger, because they've, they're now saying 180 feet versus 150-something feet. Isn't that correct? You know, 150, I mean, you're showing about half, and right now, I think it's about, they're saying 70% of that they're willing to approve, so they've increased their square footage. Isn't that correct?
I don't know which calculation was used for their diagram.
Well, you're still recommending half of the sign, essentially, right? The 50%.
Is it 50? I thought it was like, isn't it like 70% now? Is it four foot?
I'll be honest, I don't know what percentage that 180 is. You can probably answer that.
Well, the 50% is based on the other modification we're requesting against, which is that the digital sign can only be 50% of the sign. And so that's, the blue bar is showing 50.
So really, there's two issues. The size of the sign plus it being digital, that exceeds a half 50% rule, is that right?
One more quick thing, and I don't, I'm not trying to throw you a curve here. I didn't see it mentioned in the drawings. How high is, how high is that bar? And can you give me some estimation of how big these fonts are on this sign?
It's a four-foot-tall sign or fascia. So after frame...
Fonts are off the chart.
That's right. And the part one of the changing sign text is the Ryman Tonight Only, and what I handed out is what's coming next, which is the old Crow Medicine Show, right? So it just shows, and the reason why that's actually important and not just trying to be cute is, you know, the length of some names of shows and, you know, not being back like last night, but an artist that has a long name and being able to have that be at a decent size that can be projected at a reasonable distance and still be legible.
Did you have another question? No more? Okay. So any more to the applicant? All right. Thanks, guys. Open public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak regarding this project, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name's Chuck Schultz, 3514 West End Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, 37205. I may not be a architect or a zoning commissioner, but I've lived in this city for 25 years. I've been in the music business for the entire time. And the one thing that I do remember in 1994 was when Gaylord, which is now Ryman or whatever they're calling themselves now, came in and saved the auditorium. The thing that I do know, too, besides music is history, and two of the theaters that have always meant a lot to me are the Ryman, and there's also a theater in Toronto, Ontario, called Massey Hall. They were both built at the same time. And the correlation that I want to bring to you is that people know where Massey Hall is. It's Massey Hall. It's a great theater for music, and so is the Ryman. I mean, the Ryman is on Fifth, you know, Fifth Avenue. If you can't find the Ryman walking up and down Fifth or Fourth Avenue, then I don't care if you're from Ohio or Oslo, Norway, you're going to find it. I mean, we're here to talk about a sign that, I mean, I'm not going to waste your time about the rest of the expansion, which I really think is ridiculous. It's, people go to the Ryman to see. Show is one of the greatest auditoriums we have, not only in this country or in this continent, but in the world. And I've been, I've been to London, I've been to Japan, and I've seen some of the great architecture, so, you know, I'm not here to take away from anybody, but let's keep the Ryman and let's keep Nashville for what we are. We are Music City. We're not Country Music City. We're Music City, and this is one of the greatest auditoriums we have in this country. The Fox Theater didn't do anything in Detroit or the Fox Theater in Atlanta, so let's keep it between the ditches, as my grandfather would say, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any others? State your name and address.
Thank you. My name is John Brittle. I live at 5474 Franklin Pike Circle Brentwood, which is Davidson County. And I would just like to say, as a lifelong Nashvillian and a lover of historic homes and buildings, I've got more historic Facebook photo albums than anybody, I think this is a very respectful use in addition to the structure. And I would just like to say, as a residential realtor who's on the street every day with the public, I believe that Nashvillians desperately want to protect things like the Ryman Auditorium as well as experience the growth that we're experiencing, and I hope that we continue to save historic structures. And I'm not convinced that a historic structure is a brico block building where something inside happened, but I am happy as a Nashvillian with that addition and that sign.
Thank you. Are there others? Okay. Seeing that closed public hearing. Discussion?
Well, the math, the exhibit, the math exhibit here helped me understand, I think, a lot better than I did at the outset. And reading the guidelines and looking at this exhibit and thinking about what must have been intended and listening to Ben, who was part of the conversations, it's hard to imagine that this was intended or should be read to be able to take square footage from each of the four sides and stack it. You would end up with some potentially very absurd results. This might not be an absurd result, but you could pretty easily. So that's one piece, and that's, but even if we got past that, don't we still have this 50% issue with changeable copy? Because the total signage is 404 total, and the changeable copy is 259. So I think it sort of has two issues that are very clear to me that just don't work. So on the signage issue, I think staff's recommendation makes a lot of sense to me based on everything we've learned. I think we've got a lot of good information in front of us that helped us clarify it all. And I just have one question for staff. In the guidelines, it talks about redevelopment districts, and there's something about MDHA. This isn't actually in a redevelopment district, is it?
The tricky part for this one was that there's a very specific sentence that says that electronic signage is not allowed in MDHA district, which this is also one. So normally, if there's a modification being requested, because there are two different overlays, the design guidelines state that the modification should come to you. So normally, it wouldn't be an issue. But in this case, there's that one sentence that really kind of flubbed us up a little bit. So I talked with MDHA, and they sent me an email saying, "We turn it completely over to historic to apply the design guidelines as they see fit." Does that answer your question?
I think so, but if it is in a redevelopment district, the guidelines say an electronic changeable copy sign is not allowed in redevelopment district, period.
And they...
That's kind of hard to get past.
I know.
So how do we get past that in your...
They said that was not a concern, and they have approved others in the past. For instance, the arena, although not an historic district, is in the development district. An electronic changeable copy sign was approved there. So they're not concerned about it being an electronic changeable copy sign.
I get their concern. I think there's a difference between it saying that we needed, that they need to sign off on it or get their consent, and what our guidelines say on their face. It's kind of different things. Have we approved changeable copy inside a redevelopment district?
We did. The two signs on the front of the, the original front of the Ryman, on the other side of what we're talking about here, have two, they're sort of like poster-size electronic changeable copy signs.
So we have done, we've read it that way in the past, as long as...
Well, there were different design guidelines at that time.
There were not?
There were different design guidelines at that time.
Okay. So we haven't actually read that sentence to be...
Right.
Okay.
But I will say, too, that really the intent of the design guidelines, allowing for changeable copy sign at a place that has fixed seating, was so that electronic changeable copy sign could be approved at the Ryman.
There was specific discussion in the meetings about this venue, the Ryman Auditorium, and, you know, the necessity, night to night, to not have somebody on a lift or a ladder changing out the marquee every night. So this is not a variance from, I think, guess what was anticipated, or certainly what was, the changeable copy is not a variance from what was anticipated or discussed in terms of updating and creating a set of guidelines that was coherent across both planning recommendations and in the historic district. There was a comprehensive attempt to regulate signage. That was not, you know, two things weren't in direct opposition in, at the same address with each other when it came to addressing signage.
That don't make sense. I'm just still sort of confused how this sentence got in there, because it seems to be the opposite of what was intended and what everyone remembers being the discussion. It's confusing. And it doesn't say should. It is very definitive.
Hey, Robin, on the changeable, the 50% rule, go through that again. Is that applicable, like, for the entire South elevation or just for the sign? What is all that about?
That one was a tricky one for us as well, because I think the idea was, you know, there wasn't the expectation that a sign would be an entire element of a building, that there's usually a part of a building that has a sign area. You know, maybe it's that little area above the front entrance, like the one on the other side. So that one was a little new for us. Therefore, I would say that the 50% from staff's perspective was not as critical as meeting that 180 square foot. And you may not find any of that is critical in this case, but that's how we were looking at it.
Are we done? Okay. Just from a common sense standpoint, the numbers, I'm not going into that, but to me, this design, the café, the sign, is a low-key type of thing. It's not offensive to me. It's so benign that, to me, it enhances the historic and architectural value of this wonderful building that we have, the Ryman Auditorium. I also think that it's very helpful to people who, I live downtown. Half the time, I don't know what's going on at the Ryman. And I think that it would be a wonderful thing for people who are downtown to be able to see what's going on. And I think it's just such an understated sign that it really does enhance the historic and architectural value of the Ryman Auditorium. So I would vote to approve it.
I agree with you in a lot of ways, Rose. I think they could have done a lot of other things that would have been a lot more problematic. And I'm comforted with what Robin said about the 50% rule. I think there's a little leeway there. And I was probably really more struggling with that than, really, the square footage. I don't think at the end of the day, there's going to be 259 square feet exactly lit. I think, you know, odds are the type will be in, and the message won't be 259 square feet. It'll probably be, you know, it'll probably end up being 180 or 190 or 200 feet. I think it'll be the whole thing, so. And I, you know, it's a special place, and it's just, if this, you know, if it's worthy of something a little unique, then, you know, I think they've done a very good job.
I like the designs, although on the very front end, and having heard a lot of the planning commission and development of the signing ordinances, electronic signs are an issue. You get them too big, they really almost take away from the whole architectural part of it. I get the message that what we're trying to do, but it concerns me that there's that much of an electronic sign in that location. And I understand the schematic about, you know, how it's read for Broadway, but it's a concern of mine, just the electronic sign aspect of it, being that large.
Hunter?
Do we have a map of the historic district? I guess the partial map that we have shows that generally, generally, this district was intended to protect the buildings along Broadway, which, but took in the Ryman Auditorium and maybe some other sites off of Broadway. Is that generally correct?
Oh, no. I'd say it was definitely to protect the Ryman as well.
No, I understand, but the district is, essentially runs parallel to Broadway, right?
There's more than just what faces Broadway.
Right. Okay. I guess a question, you know, the Ryman is a completely different type of structure than anything else on Broadway. Broadway is, you know, a series of storefront warehouses. And unless there's anything in the guidelines that specifically addresses the Ryman, you know, I would have to assume that the guidelines were generally written to apply to the majority of the types of structures, commercial storefront-type buildings, generally smaller buildings than the Ryman. The Ryman's a civic building and auditorium. Historically, marquees and different types of signage is, has been historically appropriate and makes sense. And so I think if this commission has any leeway on the signage area, the specific calculations, I think the Ryman Auditorium in this district may be the one building that might warrant that, because it's a completely different type of structure than the vast majority of the buildings within this district. And I, too, I agree with Rose that I think this is appropriate to the addition. I think it's appropriate to the scale of the addition, scale of the overall. It doesn't detract from the historic portion of the structure. And, you know, a building of this prominence and sort of deserves kind of, you know, prominence from a signage perspective and recognition. And, I mean, architecturally, I think it sort of deserves that. So I don't see anything wrong with it. I mean, I understand that it doesn't meet the technical specifics of the guidelines, but I would maintain that perhaps those guidelines were written around the typical building on Broadway, the typical storefront, commercial warehouse-type building.
Yeah, I don't disagree with those points, and I think something certainly we should consider is that this is building sign as marquee or billboard. That's, I mean, that's what it is. The applicant has said as much. And I think for this venue, I don't argue that it's necessary. I'm curious a little bit about the traditional placement of a marquee. And I asked a question about the adjacent parcel. You know, nothing might happen there, but if something happens there, then you've got a building element that is pretty unuseful at that point, and suddenly we're back figuring out signage again. That's probably not the end of the world, but I get that there's a captive audience a block and a half away. That's not lost on me. I wonder if this is the appropriate solution for doing what's intended, given all the factors that could, you know, siding, location, all those things, that's of concern to me. And I was, I'm a little perplexed by, I get that it's integral to the cap on what's a modern sort of hat on the building. I've... modern sort of hat on the building. I wonder if another location that the hat sits and the sign's not integral to it is a better placement, but then we'd still be talking about size issues, and that's maybe more opinion than it is guideline. But I do think the location and orientation of this sign is very specific to a very specific crowd and this site. But I wonder if, I just wonder about if a building comes in where parking exists, what then? You know, you've used up all your signage and...
I don't disagree with you, Ben. I mean, the one thing that might make it better is if it wrapped around all three sides of this, so, you know, it could advertise all the way around.
Well, I've been a part of more signage conversations than I want to admit. And signage along Second Avenue and Broadway is a very, very sticky and specific thing. I've worked with people down there trying to get signs passed. They're down to the nth of an inch of what can hang, how high, how high it can be. And we're talking about the Ryman Auditorium here. This is not Broadway by any stretch of the imagination. I really am pleased with this addition. I love the way it modernizes the Ryman a little bit. I love the way it addresses the street. But the sign, I'm not bothered by it either. But the visibility from Broadway, I think, will be just fine at 180 square feet. I don't see a hardship here. I mean, if that thing is four foot tall, and I'm standing down there at the intersection on Broadway, that's, 180 square feet is plenty of sign. Plenty.
I think what happens... Okay. So you're... You're not concerned about the 50% rule. You're just seeing 180 feet versus 259.
I can just... I mean, I don't know why we just don't shift this sign towards the street and do something else with the rest of that little fascia and stay within the 180 square feet.
I'm going to give a motion. Are you ready for that?
Always ready.
With all due respect to everybody and everything that's been said, I think this proposal by the applicant at 116 Opry Place is a good design. I think it enhances one of our best buildings in town, the Ryman Auditorium. It's architectural and historical features. I also think that it enhances the views from Broadway as it is presently proposed, and actually enhances the historic area of that particular section as well. And for those reasons, I move that we approve this application.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I need hands. All in favor? Three. Okay. All opposed? Motion does not pass.
I'll make a motion to approve based on staff recommendation with the clarification that the electronic signage be reduced to no more than 180 feet rather than 154.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Corbett, could you clarify? I think staffs, and for the applicant as well, staff has, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I think the 50% sign area, given this venue, just so there's clarity for the applicant, is that... Do you want to speak to that in your motion, in terms of the guidelines, as to whether that is limited by the...
Well, yeah. But I...
Are you saying like the 180 square feet thing, or...
Correct, yeah. To the point, is 180 square feet, is your motion...
Yeah, it doesn't have to do with the 50% rule.
Okay.
It's about taking the 180 feet from the front and saying it's... Let me pull it out here. That 180 feet is based on...
The maximum allotment for that side.
The maximum allowance of that sign, trying to find the exact words in the guideline, but I read earlier...
Sure. And in other words, movable copy on the entire sign is not really, that wasn't part of that objection, I guess, by the staff, and certainly is not your intent to restrict that to 50% of the sign?
No, 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 no.
That was the clarity I was looking for, sorry.
180 square feet of electronic signage, period.
Okay. I don't think we have to amend it. That was...
No, I think that was just clarification.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I have one just comment or concern that I'm not sure where that 180 feet is, if it's pushed all the way out to the edge. And just architecturally, I have some concern about what that's going to be, since it won't be the full width of that fascia and that roof. I don't know if the applicant has an alternative that, is it 100, maybe it's, is it what's shown on this diagram? Do you have a diagram that shows 180-foot version that you would propose if that was the...
Sure. So in this, if you're looking at the diagram page, the south elevation under the applicant's interpretation is not exactly 180 square feet, but it's close, because it is, the actual lettering that you see there on Ryman Auditorium is smaller, if that makes sense, than using up the entire fascia for an electronic sign. So what you're seeing in the south elevation under applicant's interpretation is approximately 180 square feet, 50% of that being electronic. Am I explaining that clearly?
If you could make the entire sign electronic, would that get bigger or look different? Or as a design aesthetic, would you prefer it to say Ryman Auditorium and then marquee? I think, I'm trying to, I guess, get to the clarity of their question and maybe the question that I ask.
I think that's something that would warrant maybe additional study for us about whether, if we're limited to 180 square feet, how we would choose to spend that...
To use it, sure.
In terms of it being all electronic or some portion electronic.
I'd like to amend my motion that with respect to the 180 square feet, that the applicant and staff, delegating staff the authority to work out exactly how that's going to function, because especially in light of this diagram, there's a number of considerations I don't think we can figure out right here.
So, and I have another question for the applicant. So currently, on the east facade, you only have 65 square feet of signage proposed.
That's correct, yes.
I'm guessing that might change.
Yes.
Okay.
To your point earlier, we may take, since the staff's interpretation is being, I'm assuming, being accepted that it is not an aggregate but a per-side square footage calculation, then I'm also making the assumption that we can now make 50% of our north elevate, our east elevation, digital. So to your point earlier, Mr. G, that actually could turn the corner.
Right.
And 50% of our sign could now be on the east elevation.
Right.
But to Joni's point, we need to step back and reinterpret this.
But you can now add, you can go 180 feet on the east and 180 feet on the north. Is that what you're...
Or the...
Or the south.
South and east.
So you have 360 feet.
If I'm understanding correctly.
They could have 720 square feet on the entire building, and they currently are proposing 404.
Well, that's a really good point, Hunter. I mean, you could, you could have this one facade here will have, on the south, 180 feet, and presumably, you could have the same 180 feet on the east, so 259 feet now turns into 360.
Well, what my concern is, is that we don't need to see you sit here designing their sign. I think that if they change, we have an application, and we're approving what is being proposed, and we're limiting that. If those change, distributions of signage changes, I think it needs to be approved by staff.
By staff?
Yeah.
We're authorizing staff?
I mean, if they're talking about adding another electronic sign, I mean, electronic signs are problematic.
Just saying, we don't want to, we're not going to design the change today, nor are they, they want to go back to...
Wouldn't need to come back to the commission.
I would highly recommend it come back, because I don't know if you are, if you all agree that the entire fascia of the building is the sign area, or if you're going to divide it by side, that's not a decision staff can make.
I think anything beyond reducing the sign in front of us to 180 square feet, adding additional signs have to come back if that's going to be...
If I understood them correctly, too. Did I not understand that you were willing to step back and reconsider what this design is going to look like?
Right. If I can speak to that, I think what we would like to request is approval condition, conditional upon working with staff on the signage piece, that that's not approved today, but conditional on working with the staff. But to make a point of clarification, I want to make sure isn't missed here, we're requesting this entire length of the south facade, which is in excess of the 50% and of the 180 square feet. By reducing the amount where we think it's most effective and most appropriate, one of the potential solutions could be that, in effect, we actually have more digital signage on this building because we're applying it to other sides by right, if we're actually going by the book. So I just want to make sure that that clarification is understood, that we're potentially actually adding more digital signage by not being able to put it where we think it's most effective.
And that's one of the points. I think we need to be careful what we wish for, and given, in my opinion, that this, I feel is very appropriate to the scale of the structure, the scale of this important, you know, prominent icon for our city, you know, that what we get that actually meets the technical guidelines may not be as appropriate.
I understand the concern. I'm not sure why you'd want to put any digital signage facing north, and I don't know what facing east would really give you. But I understand that you want to take a step back and look at it. To be clear, the motion that I made is simply to reduce the signage facing south, and if additional signage is added in any other areas that's not in this application, it would have to come back.
Yeah.
Because we want to look at it all together.
Let's just deal with the motion.
Because there's still issues in here that we're...
Motion and amendment already out there. So we do have an amendment, and we, does anybody need their amendment restated?
I...
Yeah, we got a second already. Does everybody remember that? Okay. So, does everybody remember the amendment? Okay.
If I might be recognized, I think the applicant brought out a major point, and I usually try to sit back and let you all come to your conclusions and whatnot, but I feel like I will be remiss if I don't point this out. The applicant mentioned that they are exceeding the 50% and the 180 with the request that's current. That's important, because as you look at this sign, if it exceeds the 50%, that may be something that you face in the future. Obviously, you don't have that before you today, so you're not making a decision on that today. But the applicant has stated that they're going to go back and they're going to re-figure their sign allotments based on whatever you decide to do today. The reason I think that's important to note, and I was glad that they brought it out, and that you all are considering that in your discussion, is because your guidelines actually say that, it says modifications for exceptional design. The last sentence there says, "Exceptional design modification shall not permit electronic changeable copy where it is otherwise not permitted." Then, your guidelines under usage say that manual and electronic changeable copy is allowed for tourist-oriented businesses only when used in conjunction with a wall sign or monument sign, provided that the changeable copy portion is no longer, is no greater than 50% of the built sign area. Now, to me, that says that the maximum that you could allow, even under the exception, is 50%. Perhaps, and again, I would yield to staff on specific interpretation, but that's what I see here. So I just wanted to, I didn't want you to miss what you may be doing, and you may be, in fact, deviating from the specifics of your own design guidelines, which obviously, I can't advise you to do that. But if you do it, then I want you to understand what it is that you're doing.
Susan, I'm confused. The 50% rule, I thought that applied to total signage, so the 180 would be less than the 400 something.
And again, I would yield, I'm going to yield to staff on the specifics, because I'm not, that's not how, exactly how I read it, but if I need to be corrected, please speak up now.
Do we need to discuss that more?
Robin, I think just to, do you mind clarifying real quick for us?
What we're doing.
We're kind of headed down a rabbit hole here.
Is that 50%?
We looked at the entire fascia facing the alley as the sign area, and that the sign should be 50% of that. In addition to that, we had the allotment, and so those don't come out to be the same number. And we went with a larger number of the 180 square feet as a recommendation.
And that was the 154 versus the 180?
The 154 was, I would recommend just leaving that out. That was a different calculation. It is incorrect. The 180 is the allotment, not taking into account the 50% requirement.
Just, maybe this is the question.
I'm making a motion approving it based on your recommendation, but I'm not understanding it, based on what you just... I think we need to talk a little more.
Well, the other... Explain that better. I mean, just, when you read about the 50% of the billable area, if possible.
Yes, we were looking at that as the sign area. That was our interpretation.
I think, and you guys, tell me if you are thinking, I think we're getting confused, because already, we're talking about other elevations, and how, is our decision going to change the other elevations? It seems like it.
I think what Ms. Jones was trying to say is that if you allow for more than 50% here, you're opening yourself up to allowing for more than 50% on other elevations.
Robin, am I right that when you read the 50% rule, you're looking at it, each individual sign cannot have more than 50% changeable copy?
That rule is only for electronic changeable copy signs. So we were only applying, you know, looking at that in terms of that one side of the fascia. That rule doesn't apply for the other signage, only electronic changeable copy.
So what is it 50% of? Just that one...
Of the sign area.
Which sign?
And we...
Just the one that includes...
Of electronic changeable copy signs.
So you look at it sign by sign, not the aggregate of all the sign area, and only 50% of it can be?
Not the 50% rule. Now, I think the expectation was that there would be a larger sign, and 50% of that sign would be electronic, and the rest would not be. But this is a little bit different, because it's a part of the building. So that's kind of hard to apply.
I see.
So we just looked at that whole piece of that building as being the sign area.
Okay. I was reading the 50% to mean the aggregate of all the signage on the building, so 180 is less than 50% of 404.
That only applies to electronic signage. The rest of it is not electronic signage.
Okay. Ben, do you remember from those conversations what that 50% rule was intended to do?
I mean, I don't remember the specific conversation, but certainly, I think it was intended to not have a lot of changeable copy signage, you know, racing around buildings all up and down Broadway and in the tourist-oriented business district. Certainly, it wasn't intended to limit the Ryman, you know, unnecessarily to advertise marquee.
Why do I feel like, though, that we're, if, I mean, if whatever we decide on this one, and whatever, because they may think a whole something different after they get into it. We're already planning for the other elevations, and when they come back, we, after working with staff, we'll make the determination if we agree with what they've put on any other elevation, if that's indeed what they come back with.
I just think the point needs to be made again, that they can go back and redesign their signage and get 720 square feet of signs, and they've proposed 484.
And if I could add to that...
And that is a concession, in my mind, to getting the full length on this one facade. And I think in some of our discussions, we may not... And I think in some of our discussions, we may not have really focused on that, that if we deny this, you know, they could, they're going to end up doubling almost their, well, by 50%.
Tattoo the whole building.
You know, tattoo the whole building. And I think they've, maybe they weren't as specific as they should have been on their request in what they're compromising or what they're conceding, and I think it's pretty important that maybe we look at that.
Well, and if I could add, Richard, I think by right, and I don't know that we have the specific language from the guidelines on electronic signs, but I think they would be able to have 360 square feet of electric signs if they had one on each facade.
One thing Ms. Jones just pointed out is that the sign area may be the sign allotment, and so when it says 50%, then the electronic changeable copy sign can only be 50% of the allotment, which would be 50% of the 180 square feet.
Right. Times four.
But to Hunter's point, it could be 50% of 720.
90 feet on each facade.
You could join, you know, in a corner and have 180 and 90.
Yeah, right.
You could just go to town.
So one, you know, one option might be, again, I, you know...
Why would you? I don't think that's a, that it's a threat from them that they, they're going to do that, because why would you do that to a building like this?
You can now see this elevation there, and that elevation there.
But we're, we're talking about reducing the sign. We're not cutting the sign in half. We're not taking it away. I just, I don't think it's as big a deal as all that, that if we don't, if we take this from 250 something to 180, that people are going to throw up their hands and litter one of our greatest buildings with electronic changeable copy out of spite. That just doesn't seem like a scenario that's possible.
I mean, I don't know, but we can definitely go to this facade now and start.
What if, what if...
Put this in the corner.
What do you guys think if we just pull this back a little bit? We go ahead and just, you know, we deal with the amendment, even if we approve it or disapprove it, however we decide, then we still have the other motion out there, and, you know, let's, let's kind of drill it back. Yeah, let's clean it, drill it back in, and if we need to discuss it more after that, we can.
Can we restate it and we'll vote on it?
Do you mind, the amendment first? We have to vote on that.
The amendment.
Yeah, we'll, I'll add the amendment to it. Move for approval based on staff recommendation with the clarification that the electronic signage be reduced to no more than 180 square feet, and as to the placement of that 180 square feet, delegate authority to staff to work with the applicant to cite the sign on that south facade.
Okay. And we had a second. What this, what this motion did was include the amendment, if that's okay with everybody? All right. And we have a motion in a second?
A second.
I'm sorry. I've got a comment. And we often say this, we often delegate staff to doing things that they're already delegated to. I want to be sure that that is not authorizing staff without necessarily bringing it back to us. I mean, are, are, could you clarify? I mean, are you basically saying...
I'm asking them to work with the applicant to agree where that 180 square feet will be. To the extent they cannot reach an agreement, it would have to naturally come back to us. If they're adding signage anywhere else that isn't already in this package, likewise, that would need to come back to us.
Okay.
And that, that negotiation and agreement with staff is only for that, the electronic sign?
That's what we've seen today.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. You're okay? Okay, you have the eye on it. Okay. All right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Let's do hands again. All in favor? One, two, three, four. All opposed? One, two, three, four. Oh, man. Now I have to vote. I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote four. So motion carries. All right. 1901 Fourth Avenue North.
1901 Fourth Avenue North is a vacant lot located at the northwest corner of Fourth Avenue North and Coffee Street. The applicant is proposing to construct a new duplex and a four-car carport on the site. Both structures require setback determinations. Base zoning requires that on corner lots, primary structures be located 10 feet from the side property line. The bulk of the infill will meet this 10-foot setback along Coffee Street, but the porch and the first-story bay will intrude on the setback. The porch will be 5 feet 6 inches from the Coffee Street property line, and the first-story bay will be 8 feet 6 inches from the Coffee Street property line. Staff finds the proposed setback for the Coffee Street property line to be appropriate for several reasons. The main portion of the house will meet the side setbacks, and it is only minor facade elements that intrude on the setback. Also, the bay and the wraparound porch help to break up the Coffee Street facade and add architectural interest to this highly visible part of the infill. Moreover, an analysis of the corner lots nearby show that the historic structures, including the two-story structure across the street, are often situated less than 10 feet from the Coffee Street property line. The proposed carport also requires setback determinations for all three of its sides. Because the outbuilding is located on a corner lot, and because it is more than 700 square feet, base zoning requires that it be 10 feet from the Coffee Street property line, 5 feet from the interior lot property line, and 20 feet from the rear property line. The applicant is proposing to locate the outbuilding 5 feet 6 inches from the Coffee Street property line. And just to clarify, it should, base zoning says 10, and they're proposing 5 foot 6. 4 feet 7 inches from the interior lot property line, base zoning says 5, but they're saying 4 feet 7 inches, a difference of 3 inches. And then 10 feet from the rear property line, base zoning says it should be 20. Staff finds the proposed setbacks to be appropriate because historically, outbuildings sat close to or on the rear and side property lines. In fact, the 1957 Sanborn map shows that an outbuilding was on this property, and it sat on both the Coffee Street and the rear alley property lines. Here is the front facade. The applicant is proposing a two-story duplex infill that has a ridge height of approximately 32 feet from grade. Staff finds the structure's height and scale meet the neighboring context and the design guidelines. The duplex infill is oriented to face Fourth Avenue North, like other houses on the corners of Fourth Avenue North and Coffee Street. The duplex has two equal entrances of, entrances of equal importance, which is a typical configuration for historic duplexes. The house's primary materials include cement fiberboard cladding, a split place, split-faced concrete block foundation, and a fiberglass shingle roof. Staff asked to review all final materials for the project. Here are the two-side elevations and the rear elevation. See, the house will be 60 feet deep, not including the front porch, which is 6 feet 7 inches deep. You can see on the left elevation, the porch and the bay, which are kind of minor facade elements that won't meet that 10-foot setback. Staff finds that the window proportions meet the design guidelines. And here's the carport. The applicant is proposing a one-story four-car carport that is 18 feet 8 inches deep and 40 feet wide, and that is approximately 747 square feet. The carport will have an eve height of approximately 8 feet and a ridge height of approximately 12 feet 7 inches. The commission in the past has rejected requests for four-bay garages and carports behind duplexes. Therefore, staff recommends that the applicant redesign the carport so it just has two bays, or so that, so if it's one structure with just two bays, that could have parking pads on either side that are uncovered. Or another solution could be to have two separate one-bay carports. But because the commission in the past has rejected four-bay carports, we are recommending disapproval of this carport. And finally, here are some perspective drawings of the house and the carport. And here are some context photos. The photo in the middle there is directly across the street. It's a historic two-story structure, and it also does not seem to meet the 10-foot side setback. And here are more structures across Coffee Street and along Fourth Avenue North. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the infill outbuilding and setback determinations with the following conditions. One, staff approve all final materials. Two, staff approve the HVAC unit location. And three, the four-car carport be changed to be either a one-story, two-bay carport or two one-story, one-bay carports with or without adjacent uncovered parking pads. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the architect is here to address the commission.
Melissa, is there like on-street parking or parking somewhere else, and, you know, there will be more than two cars, right, in this residence problem?
I would assume there would be more than two cars, and you can park, I think, I know you can park along Fourth Avenue North on the street, and I think you'll probably also park along Coffee Street.
So parking on Fourth Avenue is fairly common and...
This section of Fourth Avenue, you're right before, it's pretty much a dead end to I-65, so there's not really much traffic. So when I was there taking photographs in the middle of the afternoon, there weren't any cars parked along it, but there's side, it appears to be a street that people could park on, it's just that it's not, because it's not much of a destination, there weren't many cars parked at that time.
Any more questions from Melissa? Okay, thank you. Preston, if you'd like to come up, give your name and address.
Okay, I'm Preston Quirk, architect with Quirk Designs here in Nashville, Tennessee. We're pleased that staff is in agreement with the design of the structure. My client wanted to address that corner and do something other than just have a simple corner there, and we're pleased to be able to have the bay and the covered porch on the corner. The only issue I'm here, really here to speak about is the carport. My client wanted me to come here and just appeal to you that it is a, it's a very low structure, it's open, it has a three-foot knee wall around it, it has a low-slope roof. I understand from speaking with Robin, the staff is moving towards a 750-foot maximum for outbuildings. We're, we're just under that by a few square feet. I did have another project approved earlier this year. It was on a wider lot, but it had two, two-car garages that were, that were approved on that. And I know that the staff is moving towards smaller outbuildings. I know the next item on the agenda is about outbuildings, among other things. But I just, I wanted to ask, ask the commission if you could consider approving this based on the fact that it's a small, open structure, it's low, there also was a historic outbuilding in this location, and that it is a carport, not a garage with walls, so it's a fairly open, not a massive structure. So, thank you.
Any questions for Preston? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Name and address again.
My name is John Brittle, 5474 Franklin Pike Circle, Brentwood, Tennessee. And as a residential Realtor in Nashville, I support two-family structures. We're legal in two garages or carports for those two structures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Closed public hearing, discussion. Were there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, motion, second, and discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries per staff recommendations. Okay, that concludes the cases today. Next on our agenda is duplexes and additions and dadu and outbuilding policies.
There's actually two different policies, and if you would, I'm going to present them all together, because there's a little bit of an overlap. So I think it'd make more, more sense if we just present the entire thing. The planning department has made, and is in the process of making, several changes to the ordinance, ordinance which provide the commission with some new opportunities. The definition of two-family and new standards for detached accessory dwelling units, which I'll just call dadus if you don't mind, was effective on June 20th. The bill covering attachment of two-family structures has been deferred to August 19th. If approved, the ordinance for two-family structures will delete the requirement that duplexes be attached, and will allow the MHCC to determine how duplexes should or should not be attached. Staff recommends adopting a policy for duplex development in historic overlays that provides more specific guidance to applicants on meeting the design guidelines, and that will help to avoid any confusion that the revised ordinance might generate. The draft policy was created based on feedback from design chariots hosted in April and in June by discussions that you've had here at the commission meetings, from research of other communities and existing local conditions. If approved, it will be incorporated into the design guidelines as italicized information. So the intent isn't to change the design guidelines, but to provide further direction on meeting the existing design guidelines. First, a little background. The first part of this policy for duplexes would not allow for duplexes where the property isn't zoned for two-family. The commission does not have the ability to deny use, at least that's based on our understanding, but you do have the ability to guide the design. I'm just going to hit the highlights. The full recommendation is in your staff, your packet. We recommend that we continue down the course of requiring that duplexes be one structure, fully side-by-side, in most cases, as that is what is seen historically, and the design guidelines require that, that we match historic context. However, we do propose that there are three instances where detached duplexes might be more appropriate than an attached, and actually be a better fit for the design guidelines. First, in cases where there is not enough square footage to legally subdivide the lot, but there is enough frontage and width to the lot to accommodate two single-family dwellings in a manner that meets the design guidelines. This is one example in Belmont Hillsborough from a few years ago. It's two, it looks very much like two separate buildings. You drive through there, you will never know that it's attached. It's attached because it has to, because of the zoning in place at that time. But that's a good example of a condition that might allow for two detached homes that perfectly match the rhythm of the street. Another option, of course, is for the second unit to be a detached accessory dwelling unit. A third is a situation where an existing nonhistoric building sits so far back on the lot that a building may be constructed in front of it in a manner that meets the rhythm of the street, the established setbacks, and of course, the design guidelines. There were several districts that didn't have any lots that met this requirement, and for those that did, there was two or three. So there's not a lot of instances like this. In this picture, the street is up at the top, so you can see that building is set way back, and it's, it's nonhistoric. And of course, in the case of an existing building, a duplex can be within the walls of the existing building, or can incorporate an addition. However, the addition must be appropriately scaled. We recommend that a good rule of thumb be that an addition shouldn't be larger than the historic building, and that's an avenue you've already started to head down with some of your most recent decisions. Because there's some overlap, again, I'm going to move right into the dadus. Staff recommends adopting the majority of the standards of the proposed dadu that planning has already adopted for historic overlays as well, and extending those requirements to also apply to all outbuildings. Combining the requirements will be advantageous in two ways. It will help avoid the confusion between the different standards for just a garage and a detached accessory dwelling unit, and it will assist the commission with controlling the size of outbuildings, which has been a concern in the recent years. All the details are in your staff recommendation, but this presentation will provide just an overview of the changes from our original dadu requirements and what planning has adopted and what we're recommending that we adopt. The proposed ordinance is the same as the existing in these ways. The owner of the property must still live in one of the two units if the outbuilding is used as a dadu. The dadu or outbuilding cannot be sold separately, and a restrictive covenant is required. If the lot already has a duplex, it cannot also have a dadu because they've already maximized their two units. The dadu will still need to be in the rear yard, follow the current guidance for access, and have the stairs enclosed, if there are stairs. Dormers can still take up 50% of the roof, and a second accessory structure cannot exceed 200 square feet. And here's where it starts to differ a little bit. The current ordinance and the proposed ordinance both state that the bulk zoning setback shall be followed. Because historic outbuildings were typically located close to property lines, and setback reductions are routinely approved by the commission for outbuildings, we propose going ahead and stating in the design guideline that setbacks, the maximum setback, is 3 feet from each property line with the exception of corner lots. On corner lots, the building should match the setback of other buildings facing the same street, and if there is no context, should be a minimum of 10 feet from the street-side property line. Determining the setbacks in the design guidelines, that, you know, wouldn't apply in every single case, but in most cases, prevents us from having... case, but in most cases, prevents us from having to come back to the commission for setback determinations. You will have already made that determination, and it'll be in the design guidelines. The existing ordinance determines appropriate massing based on whether the proposed outbuilding is one or two stories, but the proposed ordinance determines it based on the square footage of the lot instead. We recommend adopting the standards for dadus and outbuildings in general. It will mean that lots that are less than 10,000 square feet, the maximum footprint would be 750 square feet, or 50% of the first-floor area of the principal building. And for lots larger than 10,000 square feet, the maximum footprint will be 1,000 square feet. The building may be one or two stories, depending on if it can meet the height requirements, which I'll cover in just a minute. If living space is included, a dadu, then the square footage of the living space, no matter what the lot size is, no matter what the building size is, should not exceed 700 square feet. The proposed ordinance increases the maximum height to 27, but we recommend keeping it at 25. For example, this garage is only about six inches taller than 25 feet, and looking at other examples, staff found that 25, 25 feet seem to be more than adequate and still meet the design guidelines for appropriate massing, especially with the other massing requirements. The height will be further controlled by keeping the eve maximum in the current ordinance, and the requirement that the height cannot exceed the height of the principal building. The ordinance currently requires that dadus match the design of the principal building, and the new ordinance requires the same. However, the design guidelines allow for outbuildings to match or be utilitarian in design. We recommend that we allow for outbuildings and dadus on interior lots to either match or be utilitarian. But the outbuildings and dadus on corner lots that are highly visible should in some way match the design of the house. So that's the recap. We recommend approval of these policies by adding the information to the relevant design guidelines as italicized information. We would also like to recommend that you allow for staff to approve any outbuilding, dadu, or just a garage that exactly meets these standards, assuming that they are adopted. And of course, anything beyond that would be required to come to you. And I'm going to sit down to start the discussion, so I can keep notes of, of our discussion.
I've got a, I don't know if this is a proper clarification, but item number two on the duplex policy, would it be more clear if it said a duplex that requires the demolition of historic principal building in whole or in part, comma, that does not meet the design guidelines for demolition is not appropriate? It seems it's joining two things there that are, if, you know, if this and that, when, when in fact, it's a complete thought.
Yes, I can do that.
Yeah, I'm, in reading number two, it's almost as if, okay, you know, I'm reading it like dominoes. If one fall, if the first part of the sentence falls, and you've got the conjunction, and then the second part is true, so then I have to comply. I, I think it's a complete item. A duplex that requires the demolition of a historic principal building in whole or in part, comma, that does not meet the design guidelines for demolition is not appropriate. In other words, if a building has been so, in, in the guidelines, I'm thinking of the guidelines for demolition, if a building has been so altered that it no longer is contributing, then it would meet this standard, and could be demolished, and therefore duplex could, you know, it could be constructed there, demolishing the historic principal building. But if that weren't the case, the "and" to me just confuses, confuses the issue, is that a duplex require, that requires the demolition of historic principal building in whole and part, and does not meet the design guidelines, I mean, if it, if it doesn't meet the desired guidelines, it can't be demolished. For, I mean, if it doesn't meet the design guides, if it's a historic principal building and doesn't meet the design guidelines for demolition, then it just can't be demolished, period, so, I don't, and it could be, that could be, it's nitpicking, but it, that seemed to be, the "and" conjunction seemed to be confusing to me as to, well, which is it?
I'm sorry, where are you looking?
Number two, a duplex that requires the demolition of a historic principal building.
In, in other words, if somebody wants a duplex, and in order to get that duplex, they're required to demolish the building in whole or in part, that would be inappropriate.
Maybe to use the word necessitate or something like that.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
I understand, yeah, okay.
So a number, I understand number two, if, if you've got a contributing home, and you want to, it's a single family, you want to turn it into a duplex, you can't demo the back wall to do an addition? Because I-
If it were part of the historic part of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah. When demolition's not appropriate, it's not appropriate.
So it would-
If it doesn't meet the guidelines, it doesn't meet the guidelines. So if someone-
We do, we do that all the time for additions. I mean, not, not that it's-
Occasionally there-
That's a duplex, but-
Occasionally, there are additions that are historic. And in fact, we had one on the consent agenda today. It's an addition, but in truth, it was added in the 1890s, I think it was. So that's part of the historic part of the building.
But I'm saying, if you've got a historic home that's intact, you can tear off the back wall to do an addition. Is this saying you can't do it if you're doing a duplex?
It's just adding further clarification for people that if, if trying to get that duplex means that you need to demolish the building in whole or in part in a way that doesn't meet the guidelines, then that duplex is inappropriate.
Okay, because it does meet the guidelines to do some demo to the rear. Okay, I got it. In other words, I guess if somebody were proposing, in today's example, to come and take off the little short L that is historic in its own right, and, and wanted to slap the duplex up a little closer, or, or do something that would alter that, this clarifies that that's not, you can't do it. That's the intent of it, whether it clarifies it or not, is up to us.
Did we decide that it would be, beat number two to death, a proposed duplex or just a duplex?
We cannot propose as, as opposed to require.
Well, no, I was going to say, a proposed duplex that requires. In other words, you're building it, I mean, you're trying to make a duplex rather than it just being a duplex.
Isn't this sentence just stating that if it, if your application doesn't meet the guidelines for demolition, you can't demolish the existing building?
It is. Keep in mind that this policy is not just for you, but it's also to help other people meet the design guidelines. And the concern is that with this new ordinance, that there will be this, this expectation that a lot of things can happen that we all know cannot happen. So this is as much for other people to understand what's really going to meet the guidelines and what's not, as much as it is for you. If that helps any, no?
I just wonder if it's necessary.
If you're, are, is everybody okay with that, or not? Okay. I was about to jump to the ownership of the dadu.
Sorry, I think it's confusing and not necessary, item number two, frankly, so. I'm not trying to be difficult, I just think, if, if you don't meet the guidelines for demolition, you don't meet the guidelines for demolition to do anything, right?
I understand, but we get a lot of, of interesting requests, and a lot of push-
Maybe it's just confusing, maybe it's just a confusing thing.
We'll just take it out. We thought it was, was helping people, but if it's confusing, we'll just take it out.
Okay, so we're deleting that. So are we saying that the dadus, I don't like to use that word, that when they do it, the person, one of the persons has to be living in that, like, so this is, a developer can't do that? Is that what you're saying?
The owner, they can sell to someone, they can sell the, both properties together to one person, that owner has to live in one of the two units. That was a part of the original ordinance, and it's a part of the current ordinance.
Okay. So if they sell it to someone, that someone has to own, own it and has to live in one of them. And if, and does that keep on going forever?
It does.
How is that enforced?
Not through our body.
Okay.
Basically, someone can have a dadu and sell it to me, and I only want it as a rental property.
No, you cannot, according to the ordinance, and this isn't something that this body has the ability to change, you can't sell off the dadu.
Yeah, I mean, it's a codes enforcement issue, it's way outside anything we can, we can do.
If you want to have a rental apartment in your garage, you can't sell it off as a separate unit, but that's not our-
But what if I bought the entire property and rented both units?
Wouldn't meet the ordinance. But again, we don't have the ability to change that portion of the ordinance.
Well, I'm kind of with Ben, who would know?
Not first to the-
That's, that's not up for us. We don't have to enforce it.
Yeah. It's a laws issue. Whatever.
I know it was a lot of information, I don't know if everyone, was everyone able to study these beforehand?
I've read, I thought it was overall really good and helpful to try to consolidate a lot of the different decisions that we've made over time, especially in reaction to the way some of it's changing at the council level. And applaud Robin for standing up in front of groups of community members who were, maybe not all of them there to work on this so much as Bent, and she kept going back and getting input and keeping it positive, and it was, I went to a couple of them, it was not an easy task. So I think this is a great result from some unpleasant work.
Robin, I, I don't know, sorry, on, I did want to maybe clarify for us, and, and there was a case, three meetings ago, two, three meetings ago, that on bulk enassing, we're, we're basically setting a threshold, kind of like date certain, it's, it's square foot certain, that we're allowing for a square footage that there is, I think, to the guideline, this would be- It's a question, is this in, in conflict with, if there's, say, there's an outbuilding next door that is smaller than this, I don't know that it would be so substantially smaller that, that our, our new guideline would be in contradiction to one that's already on the books, and I'm speaking specifically to the guideline that says in relation to other historic outbuildings, just a clarification.
That's a really good question, and it's been one that has not been interpreted strictly, because when you're looking at historic building, outbuildings, they're very small. They're usually one bay for a much smaller vehicle, and so it's really not reasonable to take a very strict interpretation of that design guideline, or you wouldn't be allowed, you wouldn't be, be able to allow people to have reasonably sized two-car garages. So I understand where you're headed with that, but knowing that we can't really do that anyway, we didn't, we weren't too worried about it?
I don't object to the policy, I just want to make sure that we're not creating, well, that we're fully aware of what it is we're doing. I, I have no problem with it at all, I just want to be clear to both ourselves and everybody else who watches this and pays attention, that it is a, it's square foot certain now, I think, in, in lieu of a matter of interpretation.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One, the historic precedent of the house behind the house, which we've seen in lots of our historic districts, and I've mentioned a number of times, is perhaps some of the most unique things that I enjoy about our historic districts, is those sort of quirky little surprises and some of the most interesting parts of our neighborhoods. Item number five, under the duplex policy, which lists three exceptions where staff feels like detached duplexes would be appropriate. Did you all consider that precedent? And I'm not sure, I'm not sure this opens the door for, for following that historic precedent.
For following a house behind a house?
Right, such that you find in many of our-
That's covered under-
Corner lot.
One of the, one of the ways someone can have a duplex with an existing house is by adding on to it, so having an addition in the back.
Right, but I'm talking about 12th and Woodland, talking about a number of other, I don't know, East End and Lachlan Springs, where, I don't know exactly how it happened, but historically, there was either a subdivision of a lot on a corner, and a, a second home was built behind it on the alley, that probably is bigger than a dadu by ordinance.
Yes, I understand now. Yes, we looked at that, and what we came up with is that the majority of the time, not every time, but the majority of the time, his, the, the old divisions of that back end of a lot usually were two lots deep. So it was like two lots facing one street, and both of them cut off the back end in order to accommodate another little house back there. We don't have many scenarios like that, you know, if one came up, you could certainly look at that. But for most corner lots, they're not deep enough to accommodate a full-size home. So they could still have a dadu, but we thought, you know, every scenario we looked at, looking at, well, what if they met the, the appropriate front setback, they met the rear setback, they met the side setbacks, everything we came up with was really the size of a dadu anyway, because they're just not deep enough.
I, I think that's sensible, because you've got, if you have a 50-foot wide lot, and you turn the corner, by the time you obey the contextual setback, and then give some kind of what is a side, but rear setback for the second home, the house can at most be 30 feet deep. And so those do exist, I think a lot of them really are cool. I just haven't seen anybody ever bring an application of one of those cool little houses on a 50-foot wide lot. It's always something much bigger, so it doesn't work. I'm, I'm not willing to say it can't be done, I just, I don't know that the economics and the wants of development community and, and buyers are going to bring us one of those, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's off limits. It just has to be a pretty small house. Otherwise, it's one of those where it's much deeper, because it was two lots turned into three, and then you can do a bigger house, because you've got a lot of depth and-
Well, I, I guess, I mean, I think there's, there's two things there. One, you know, if we're getting specific on the dadu regulations, I want to talk about that in just a minute, but, and are limiting that option to the, the dadu regulations, then I'm afraid we're, you know, I'm afraid we're actually sort of, right, we're, we're amending the guidelines. If we're really beginning to establish, you know, that kind of specifics in, in our policies, and that really gets to the dadu, outbuilding and dadu-
That's a separate ordinance, so I mean, I think it legally works, suffered from our guidelines. I mean, it's not, it, it got noticed up, it went through all the council and all that stuff. It wasn't really our action, it's just something that became part of all our guidelines by separate ordinance, right?
Right, and, and of course, this is just a policy for meeting the guidelines. It does not mean that there aren't some scenarios for corner lots where something larger than a dadu might be appropriate. And then, of course, we would bring that to you, but this is to provide guidance for people. And this is something we heard loud and clear in every one of these charrette meetings, is that neighborhoods don't want huge buildings, second buildings on corner lots. So again, the majority of the time, what they can get anyway is a dadu. So again, this is our guidance for the majority of lots. Not every lot's the same, and there may be other scenarios out there that we'll, of course, bring to you when they come up.
Example we saw today, what the, that was, was on the consent agenda, but got pulled off with the house, kind of a home house, when, what is your take on that relative to these policies?
And again, keeping in mind, everything's on a case-by-case basis, in that situation, they already had a large addition, and they were really improving the, the addition that they already had, and they were just, they really weren't adding on a-
If they did, if that did not have the existing addition, and just the original home, and they wanted to build that structure behind it with the little thing, connector-
Because that, that lot gets so much wider in the back, it could be, I don't have the exact calculations, you know, I have not reviewed what the setbacks should be, but that could be a case where someone wants to propose something a little bit bigger, and we would bring that to you. Another issue that we're running into with these requests that we've received for building on corner lots, is they all, not only do they want a very large home behind a home, but they also want to accommodate parking for four cars, at least, off-street. And so, again, on your average lot, you've got two houses and four parking spaces, that becomes an awful lot. becomes an awful lot on one lot that was really only ever meant to accommodate a house.
Well, and additionally, it just dumps a lot of people on the street. I mean, it's just, it's a big trickle-down.
I thought the one we looked at today, if you, if, to me, to me, based on that lot in the way that it got 80-some feet wide at the rear, and that there was an alley there, and the setbacks on, I think it was Oakland was the side street, they could have, to me, it looked like you could have just demolished the old demolition, and if there's a point where the houses, the duplexes don't need to be attached, they could have built something very similar to that addition as a separate structure, and it could have looked great. There's enough room there. But like Robin said, I think the vast majority of the time, people are trying to put too much on a 50-foot wide lot, it just doesn't work.
Chairman, I'm not, did we ask for public comment before we get into deliberation too much?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I don't know that there is any, I just want to make sure.
You know what, I wasn't even thinking of it as, okay, and all these people are here too, I'm sorry. Open public hearing, please come forward and state your name, and I apologize, should have done that earlier.
Thank you, John Brule. Address is on there. 5474 Franklin Pike Circle. I believe that I was at every one of those public charrettes, and as Aaron said, they did a fabulous job, and it wasn't always pretty. And I believe that as a layperson, I probably know as much about two-family structures as anybody in Davison County. I would like to say that I believe there may be a deficiency in item one, and I would just like somebody to explain it to me, please. Duplexes shall only be constructed on properties that are zoned to or multifamily. My question is, there are a number of legal non-conforming two-family dwellings that are in the RS zoning districts. This policy should include those as well. And I believe that, and I agree completely about duplexes on corners, and I welcome this opportunity to build second smaller homes on corners, small, small. I do believe that bad infill in my world that was built in the 60s, 70s, 80s, that are in historic districts, that are zoned RS, that have a two-family legal non-conforming structure on them, also should be included in that verbiage, so that if I have a client who wants to tear down a 70s one-story duplex, or even a triplex, that's legal, I believe that the way it's written, if we tear that down, it shall only be constructed on properties that are zoned two-family or multifamily, does not address those.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, sir.
Because I really appreciate the point, but isn't that an issue that's outside of the, this is, this is for zoning, and I don't, again, I'm not sure if number one is necessary.
I'll recommend that we, since everyone has two minutes, that we get through public comment and address them after, unless, of course, you have questions for the applicant.
Okay.
I love the applicant, I'm just a guest.
For the guest.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot we had a two-minute limit.
That's okay, I'm not sure where the clock is, but that was, that was my question on that, and, and then secondly, since Chairman, he took up all my time.
That's okay.
I would like to, I would like to ask about the second parking unit, whether it's a carport or garage or whatever, on a legal and historic two-family structure, which I believe we're going to see a lot more of, because those of us out there believe we're going to have more historic districts, and a lot of them are taken up by bad rentals that we would love to replace. I believe the staff can handle how they look, I would just hate for a restriction to be so tight that half those duplexes that are out there are legal non-conforming, and I'd just like for you to discuss that. Thank you, Robin.
Okay. And Robin, will you, will you repeat them later when we are discussing things? Okay, others can come forward.
I'm gonna get easy now, just ask, just listen.
Okay.
Just listening.
Okay, all right. Okay, closed public hearing.
So in answer to that, the purpose of number one, I'll just rewrite it to say zone for multi, zoned in that way. Obviously, as Commissioner G pointed out, it's not this body's ability to decide how many units are appropriate. The purpose was really, again, just to provide information that it's not going to be allowed anywhere where it's not zoned for it. We can just change that.
Yeah, I'm not, I agree with Hunter, I'm not sure one is even necessary, and I don't think we have the ability to override the, the zoning in the state law that says it's grandfathered in and they're entitled to two units. I think it just is what it is, like, it would be zoned R instead of RS for all, for our purposes.
I may have made a mistake in trying to put information for applicants in the policy, so we'll do different documents.
I don't know if it's a mistake so much as you're just trying to save, save yourself some trouble.
So did you decide to strike one, is that what you decided then?
Again, I really do feel pretty strongly that in order to provide the best guidance to an applicant, we should explain that it's only allowed on properties that are zoned for it. But it can certainly be reworded to be clearer.
Somehow it's allowed otherwise.
And I think too, keep in mind, I wouldn't put myself out there as an expert on zoning issues, but certainly I think those that sit up here are more informed than many people who might wonder, or might look at this policy and try to figure out how they might use their, you know, what land use policy applies to them, especially in a district.
Does that include both parts of what he had said, the second part as well?
We still stand by our recommendation for garage sizes.
Okay.
Robin, I think it was last meeting, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about, I think it was a duplex, addition behind a house, and there was, the entrance to that addition was not through the front, because the existing building couldn't accommodate that. What's, going forward, what's, where are we on that, on those situations?
Right now, this policy is continuing down the same road we've always been on, that you can't dictate whether or not there's a duplex on an existing house, you can only control the design of the addition.
Oh, as in, if there's an addition, not as a new one, is that, that's the differentiation?
Can't control the use of it.
I'm not talking about the use, I mean, there's something in here about if there's a duplex, the entrances need to be in the front, is that, that's primarily for new construction?
That's new construction.
But it's one or more?
Do we know how many, or eight of us build duplex on those lots?
There are some neighborhoods that are primarily zoned single-family, however, in every district, there's, as Mr. Brattle pointed out, in every district, there's some non-conforming legal uses, so it.
When I was on the council, of course, we went through a deal where we had to build one, and some of the places in the city, mass, we were going to large areas, and some people opted out, and so, you know, when you think about some of that, and hodgepodge stuff in some of our overlay districts, it just makes you wonder what percentage of that we have, you know, still able to build duplexes on the front.
It depends on the district, and I don't have any percentages, I'm sorry. But yeah, some of them are primarily two-family, some of them are primarily single-family.
So when we look at an addition behind an existing historic home, and we're not supposed to ask if it's a duplex or not, does it matter, does it mean anything to us?
You're welcome to ask anything you like, of course.
It doesn't have any, doesn't have a meaning.
I, I think that may be a discussion for another time.
Right.
I think there's still, you brought up some good points last month, and I brought them up to legal, but we haven't had a chance to discuss them thoroughly, so I'm not really prepared to go into those details today. But so for right now, yes, you can ask anything you like, but if it's zoned for duplex, they have the ability to realize that duplex, if it's an existing building, they can do it either with an addition or with a dadu.
And those rules, I mean, those regulations are different than building a new duplex.
Correct. The majority, this policy would say that the majority of the time, and this is what you've already been doing, duplexes should be one structure with both doors facing the street.
But that, that's hardly applicable at all for additions now, behind an existing building.
But there, I'm sorry, what was the question?
That's, that's going to be very difficult in a lot of cases, when there's an existing one-story.
That's, that's for new construction, for a new building.
Right, right.
For an existing building, they have, according to this policy, two options, and they even have that today. They could have a dadu, or they could add on to the back.
And adding on to the back, we don't really care where the entrance is.
I think that's another discussion.
So do we, I don't know if there's any other discussion, do we need to vote to approve this, or did, was, are you going to, we like some of it, or?
If you feel it's ready to be approved, the information will be added into the, as italicized, information into the design guidelines.
We seem like we only had a couple of particulars, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, and I apologize, I'm, I would like another month to digest this a bit more, and maybe sit down with planning and historic together, which we haven't had an opportunity to do before we adopt it and put it in our, in our guidelines.
Okay, so we, we just make them a motion to defer it, is that what we would do? Okay, so can, can I take that as a motion to defer?
Yes.
And I got a second from you, I'm sorry, a second, okay. Any discussion about that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion deferred. I think that's all the business. You know, really quick, speaking on air, and I do want to make a statement that we do appreciate staff, and I want to make, you guys, especially lately, have had to really be on the front line on some very particular instances, and I know you've taken a lot of, you know, abuse is probably too strong sometimes, but you've had a lot, so we do appreciate all the work you guys do for us.
We appreciate that, and we certainly appreciate everything you guys do.
Yeah, so I really, we appreciate all of you, so make sure you get that around to Sean, and Paul, and everybody.
Thank you.
Even the people behind.
You take a lot of bullets.
Yeah, you take a lot, and so we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And we want to thank you for sitting in with us today, you're welcome to come back anytime, you want to. Okay, with that, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Okay, we are adjourned.